Everybody. Would you please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Councilwoman Noack.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Mr. Clerk, roll call.
Supervisor Wareham.
Here.
Councilman McCarthy.
Here.
Councilwoman Nowick. Councilwoman Inzarella.
Here.
Councilwoman Noack.
Yeah.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, thank you for attending August 3rd Town Board meeting. This evening, this meeting will be for the purpose of comments, public comment on the draft comprehensive master plan. The three-minute rule will be in effect. You'll be called up as a speaker. Identify yourself. You have three minutes. When you hear the warning tone, we ask for your cooperation. You know you have one minute to wrap up your comments. I do want to advise the public here tonight that at the end of this meeting, there'll be a couple of things you should know. We will, we, the board, and our experts will be here to answer any questions after the meeting is closed that you may have. Comments will all be put into the record. Any written comments that have been already sent to the clerk's office or the planning department, they will all result in the planning department so they can all be reviewed both for the SECR and before we vote on the. We will not close this hearing tonight because there are probably many people who want to comment who were not able to attend. So we will adjourn the meeting at the, at, tonight, before we close. And the public record will be open until August 9th, close of business, which is 4:00 p.m. On the board meeting of August 10th, we will then close this public hearing. So folks have another week or so to put written comments in, to visit Town Hall, they can go online, whichever they prefer, so that we make sure we capture all the comments that people have. So without further ado, I will turn this meeting over. There is a short video, but I'll turn the meeting over to our Director of Planning, Mr. Peter Hance.
Thank you, Supervisor, and members of the Town Board. I'd like to thank all of you for arranging this public hearing tonight and your commitment to this important process. Nearly three years ago, the town set out on a mission to update the master plan, which is over 50 years old. Since then, we have been working tirelessly to see through its completion and work through a pandemic and the terrible loss of our friend Jeff Ginoda, who was the project manager for our consultant, H2M. There are many people involved in this update, and I would like to take a minute to acknowledge the hard work of our Town Environmental Department, especially Howard Barton, Stephanie Hurd, and Director David Barnes. Their office has been involved in every meeting, workshop, and conference call. I would like to give a huge thank you to Nicole Gargiulo for her email blasts, press releases, website design, updates, hosting and moderating all Zoom meetings, and preparing the short video that will be shown in a minute. I'd also like to thank our consultants, H2M, especially Steve Hyman, Constan Vavilis, and Angie Appolinus. They are professionals that know what they are doing, and they have kept us on track through this process. Civic organizations, chambers of commerce, and local news for promoting the plan and helping achieve a high level of community input. The Smithtown, Kings Park, Comac, and Hopgog School districts that promoted the workshops, but also offered us meeting spaces for the 2019 workshops. And most importantly, the residents of the town for attending the workshops, sending emails, and answering surveys. Without this information, we would not have a plan. At this time, we would like to begin with a short video presentation followed by a PowerPoint presentation where we are in the update process and what amendments are being proposed.
Hi there. Good evening, and welcome to the public hearing for the Town of Smithtown Draft Master Plan. You might be asking yourself, what is the master plan? Let's say a property owner decides to sell their land. If the property owner was smack dab in your residential neighborhood, you wouldn't want the new owner to build a warehouse or a factory there, would you? No, you'd want someone to build another house. That's where the master plan would come into play. The town oversees all local zoning matters. That means if someone buys a piece of land, they are required by law to build based on what the zoning says can go there. It is not some magical document that just lets property owners build overnight. The comprehensive master plan is a roadmap for the future of the town over the next few decades. Additionally, the plan depicts the future goals of a town and gives advice on how to achieve those goals. It is a path to ensure open space remains protected land and how to expand that open space over time. The Smithtown Comprehensive Master Plan covers everything from environmental impact, social well-being, economic vitality, and sense of community. It is a manifestation of its citizens, which is why it is so important to get things right and why the Town of Smithtown conducted a rigorous, three-year public outreach and input operation. A 360 marketing campaign strategy was implemented to inform the public. We began advertising efforts for public outreach, which included print media in the local papers, regular news coverage, commercials, and public service announcements were produced and aired on social media, YouTube, and GTV. The town sent reminders through the Town App, which currently has over 12,000 subscribers. We included the news inside the annual recycling calendar and tax bills, which went out in the mail. We hung posters in storefronts and at public venues like Town Library buildings, left flyers at vestibules at public service buildings, restaurants, and gyms, and enlisted the school districts to distribute flyers to the student body to bring home for Mom and Dad. We even offered community service to generate input from our youth. The first round of public input resulted in 370 people who signed up at the hamlet charrettes. 1,200 provided responses to the online survey, and an additional 500 respondents participated in Lake Avenue Vision Study. Based on the responses from the community, the Town of Smithtown Planning Department, Environment and Waterways, and the H2M team began preparations of the master plan. In December of 2020, the draft plan was introduced to the public in a second series of presentations, this time via six Zoom meetings due to the pandemic. Over 700 residents participated in the Zoom meetings, and over 1,000 residents tuned in via YouTube after the fact. After the second phase of public outreach, H2M, the Planning Department, and Environment and Waterways went back to the drawing board as residents expressed additional input based on the draft plan. The draft plan was officially amended at the Town Board meeting on June 8th, 2021. Amended highlights include maintaining a light industry zone throughout most of the Town Line Road, Old North Port Road industrial area, incorporating the Suffolk County Bike Master Plan into the town's master plan, in addition to filling in the gaps in the town's bicycle network. Recommendations for the zoning of the New York Avenue School property have been modified to protect current residential zoning, the preservation of athletic fields, and historical structures. The neighborhood business zone allows for retail use to continue, the modification and streamlining of the process for obtaining a certificate of existing use, so that any property owners who are now deemed nonconforming as a result of the recommended amendments can easily obtain a certificate of existing use. Those changes bring us to today's public hearing, where we hope to hone and perfect the town's master plan. A final SECR scope will be issued in the late summer. A draft generic environmental impact statement is anticipated for the fall of this year. A mandatory public comment period will follow. The comprehensive master plan and the generic environmental impact statement will be revised as necessary to address those comments. And finally, the adoption of the SECR findings and final comprehensive plan is anticipated in the spring of 2022. This master plan is the result of experts in their field at H2M, our talented professionals in Smithtown's Planning Department, Environment and Waterways, and you, the Smithtown residents who have played such a massive role in shaping the future of our community. Thank you for your input.
Thank you. So next, I would like to introduce Allison Murray. She is a principal planner in the Planning Department and the town's project manager for the master plan. She knows the draft plan inside and out, and she will present the proposed amendments to what we believe is a great master plan that the town will be proud of.
Thank you, Supervisor, and members of the Town Board, and thank you, everybody in the public, for, for coming to participate in this public hearing tonight. What I'd like to start off with is just a brief synopsis of why we're here and what the benefits of adopting a master plan are. First, what is a comprehensive plan? It's a plan, it's a guiding document that establishes a vision for the town and sets goals and objectives based on the community's input. It identifies measures to achieve those goals and objectives, and that ranges from policy and standards and town code to administration and to capital projects. Possibly one of the most important aspects of this is that the plan is continually evaluated. It is not intended to be a static document that does not change, but over time gets evaluated and gets updated. And I think, as Pete had said, our last plan was last done in 1957, yet there have been some planning actions that have been done since that point, but it's definitely time for, for a new plan. Why adopt a comprehensive plan? It guides future land use decisions, so rather than having to make ad hoc decisions as, as applications come in, it sets a policy. It communicates the community's vision to prospective developers and to property owners and state and local agencies so that everybody is aware of the goals and the objectives that the town has moving forward. Also, projects that are recommended as part of the plan receive higher eligibility in terms of funding understate and federal funding programs. What a comprehensive plan does not do, it does not dictate or evaluate site-specific development. It also doesn't approve site-specific development. So it sets a general guideline, and then, moving forward, once there is development proposals that are specific, they will be evaluated at that point. This slide here, although I guess the font is a little bit small when it's so far away, just depicts how many steps there are in the process to creating the master plan. We are about halfway through right now, so I'll move my cursor over. Oh, you can't see the cursor. But we're about halfway through. We started back in 2018 by issuing a request for proposals for a consulting firm to help us in drafting the plan. The town hired H2M in the fall of 2018. Then we spent the first half of 2019, from January through, through the summer, doing public outreach, both in terms of questionnaire, online survey, the, and, and public workshops. Then 2020, the better part of 2020, H2M had spent drafting the comprehensive plan that was presented to the Town Board in December of 2020, and we went out to do another six community outreach meetings in the beginning of 2021 to present the draft to, to the community. So that brings us to the point that we are now, which is a public hearing, a formal public hearing before the Town Board, for members of the public to provide your comments and input on the draft as it's been presented. As you'll notice, there are a good half dozen more steps to go before the plan can be adopted, but we just wanted to show where you, we are in the process. What are the components of a comprehensive plan? All comprehensive plans, including the town's, will include goals and objectives, an inventory and analysis of our existing conditions and where the town intends to move, and recommendations. The town's plan is divided into five sections. We have a section on land use, transportation, community facilities, sustainability, and then there are the hamlet plans, so there's individual plans for each of the hamlet. So for those of you, if there are people that haven't, that haven't looked at the plan yet, just helpful for you to know. If you want to know what's recommended for St. James, you can go to the St. James Hamlet Plan. If you want to know what the transportation recommendations are, you can go to the transportation plan and so forth. The goals that are set forth in the comprehensive plan, these goals were developed as a result of the public workshops and the online questionnaire that we had in 2019. I'm going to read through the, the first few of them, just so the community knows what, what was established. First, preserve and protect the town's natural and cultural resources, to preserve and protect residential neighborhoods, provide a diversity of housing types in a manner that's compatible with single-family development patterns, enhance the downtown business districts, promote economic vitality of industrial and business districts, provide neighborhood retail options that complement but do not compete with the downtown businesses, provide safe and efficient transportation mobility, to provide adequate public facilities and services, and promote conservation of energy and sustainability principles. For the recommendations, the draft plan sets forth approximately 200 recommendations. I will not go through all 200 recommendations. They are split up into the same sections that the plan is split up into, which is land use, transportation, community facilities, and sustainability. Most of these recommendations were discussed or presented to the Town Board in the December 2020 presentation that H2M did. It's quite long, but for anybody that's interested in, in looking at that, that presentation is available on our website as well. I think it's about an hour and a half long. The recommendations were also discussed in the community meetings that we held via Zoom, and those, those workshops are also available via Zoom. Generally, I'll go through the very basics. For land use, the recommendations involve revitalizing the downtowns, so we recommend different zoning districts that are tailored to each of the downtowns, because the downtown of Smithtown is different than St. James, is different than Kings Park. Right now, they're all governed by the same zoning district, so there's a recommendation to differentiate those zones. To diversify housing options, priority is preserving the single-family residential neighborhoods, however, also allowing apartments above stores in the downtown and transit-oriented development adjacent to the stations, and, and limited garden apartments and townhouses in select locations in the town. One of the other goals is reducing incompatible uses and also to modernize and simplify the zoning ordinance. In terms of transportation, looking to improve pedestrian accessibility, implement traffic calming in the necessary locations throughout the town, and improve the bicycle network. For community facilities, recommendations are to upgrade the existing facilities, establish an open space fund, acquire additional open space for both passive and, and active parkland, and protect historic resources. For climate resilient action plan, promote smart growth strategies, energy efficiency, and alternative energy, and to integrate green infrastructure opportunities into municipal and, and private projects. In June of 2021, beginning of June, the Planning Department prevar, sorry, prepared a planning advisory report that was submitted to the Town Board that recommended about two dozen amendments to the draft plan. Those amendments were drafted based on the input that we had received during the six community workshops held at the beginning of the year. In June 8th, the Town Board adopted a resolution formally amending the draft plan per the planning advisory report. The Town Board also issued a revised draft SECR scoping document and had a subsequent public comment period on that scoping document, which closed on July 9th. The final scoping document, I believe, was issued yesterday. Is that correct, David?
Yes.
The next handful of slides, I promise, I think it's only about five more minutes, will go through the, the, I guess, more important of the amendments or the ones that I think are, are people are more interested in. The first is with respect to Old North Port Road. The original plan, which you'll see the recommendation on the left-hand side of the screen, the original plan in December, recommended rezoning approximately 105 acres along Town Line Road and Old North Port Road from light industry to, as a result of the comments that we had received during the meetings, the Planning Department recommended, and the Town Board changed that recommendation to 11.5 acres, so it went from 105 acres to 11.5 acres. And that 11.5 acres, if we can see, on the right-hand side of the screen, is currently split-zoned and is adjacent to the railroad track, which gives the opportunity to potentially mitigate and eliminate some of the railroad. The area is, with respect to Raleigh Farm and the adjoining property, the plan recommends keeping that property zoned R-21, however, given its proximity to the downtown, that the town may want to consider allowing multifamily development if such a development provides a public benefit, and that development would also be subject to a site-specific environmental impact statement. For downtown Kings Park, the primary area here that I'd like to focus on is Pulaski Road. The major, I think, concern that we heard from the public was that there's a lot of retail along this corridor, and that by eliminating retail from the NB zone, that it would be significantly detrimental to those businesses. What the Town Board agreed to do is allow retail to remain in the NB zoning district, and also to modify the setback requirements along Pulaski Road so that the average of the structures can, can keep the existing setbacks opposed to what the neighborhood business district would, would otherwise require. It also recommends modifying the procedure for obtaining the certificate of existing use, which would allow nonconforming uses to easily be grandfathered in. And one of the other comments that we had received was with respect to the legend on the, on the mapping. So the map was clarified to distinguish between the Kings Park core zone and the transition Along West Jirico Turnpike, there was a recommendation to rezone the area, we call it next to the TDG Apartments, the new apartments built in Comac. The recommendation had been to rezone the surrounding area for multifamily. What that's been changed to is leaving the zone as a WSI zone, however, putting in a floating zone that would allow multifamily in that location at such time as the Town Board receives a development proposal for such. I think that's the, the major, the other was, they would also allow auto repair uses in this area, which is currently permitted, but the, the draft plan had an error in it which indicated that they would be removed, so that's not correct. The Crooked Hill Road area, these are minor amendments that were done with respect to the Vanderbilt Shopping Center. Part of that property is not zoned for shopping center business, so we recommend changing that zoning so that it's all zoned for shopping center business. And there are a couple of offices on Comac Road that are currently zoned office business, but the plan recommended changing that zoning. We recommend keeping that zoning as office business. For the New York Avenue School, I know there are probably people here for that, the original draft had recommended changing the zoning of that entire site to Transit Village, somewhat similar to what the Central Business District is, is currently. But based on the comments that we had received, we recommended, the amendments that the Town Board adopted, that the area zoned R-10, which is the majority of, of the New York Avenue site, should remain zoned residential, and that development should be clustered into townhouses or garden apartments that preserve the athletic fields and the historic resources. So only the area currently zoned commercially would be zoned commercially, and the area that's currently zoned residential would remain zoned residential. The plan still supports the use, municipal and community uses of the site, as well as the transfer of development rights to the site. We just wanted to note that this is a school district property. The site is not currently for sale, as far as we know at least, but these recommendations would guide development if and when the school district decides to access the property. In the area of St. James, there were some minor modifications with respect to the downtown zoning along Lake Avenue. The plan had originally recommended extending the downtown zoning to First Avenue. However, First Avenue is, is definitely much more of a residential street, and so the plan's been amended to allow the expansion of the downtown zoning on a case-by-case basis, but only to support buildings that front Lake Avenue. So this would ensure that there are no commercial buildings fronting on, on First Avenue. There were some minor changes with respect to properties on Mariches Road. Those properties should remain zoned professional business, as they're regular businesses, not residential. And then, similar to, similar to the Pulaski Road area in Kings Park, North Country Road has a significant number of businesses and that are currently zoned central business. The plan recommends changing that corridor to neighborhood business, which we feel is more appropriate, however, recommends allowing retail in this area so that there would not be nonconforming uses along, along that corridor. Similar, again, to Pulaski Road, recommend that the front yard setbacks in this corridor be consistent with the average setbacks of the existing buildings, so they would not have to be consistent with the neighborhood business setbacks. For Jiradine, the couple of recommendations that we had in the amendments were that the area of the sewage treatment plant should not be zoned parkland, that uses should be allowed that support Stony Brook University and the hospital, and that any future development be designed to maintain the character of North Country, of the North Country Road corridor and the Mills Pond Historic District. As I know, the board knows, and members of the public, this is a pending subdivision application, so I know that we'll have comments on that, but we just wanted to bring forth the, the recommended amendments. This is a copy, again, of the slide that was shown in the beginning, except we have grayed out the parts that have occurred already. From this point forwards, we have the, the hearing tonight. The hearing will remain open for another week, so anybody that's interested can submit comments to the Town Clerk. You can also, if you'd like to copy them to the Planning Department, you can. Whether you send them to Planning or to the Town Clerk's Office, we will make sure that both of the, of the other departments get them. Following that, we expect to have a draft environmental impact statement submitted at some point late fall, winter of, of 2021. There'll be a comment period following that, and then the plan and the EIS would be, would be revised accordingly. And if all goes hopefully well, we could expect, we could expect adoption in spring of 2022, we'd say. So just this last slide, and then I'll turn it back over to Supervisor. This is information for anybody looking to submit comments. I have the link up here for, for the comprehensive plan. If people can't see it, you want to come and get me later, and I'll be able to provide you with the link. You can mail or email comments to the Town Clerk's Office. You could also mail or email them to the Planning Department. We ask that all comments are submitted to the Town Clerk's Office no later than 4:00 p.m. on Monday, August 9th. That will allow the Town Clerk to make sure that everything gets recorded properly in, in the record before the Town Board closes the hearing on the 10th. If anyone has questions on the plan, feel free to stay after the meeting and speak with either myself or Peter. We also have Matt Calado in our office who is here, so we have a number of members of the Planning Department that are here that can help answer questions, or feel free to email us or call at any point, and we're happy to speak as well. If you have questions regarding the SECR process, we have David Barnes here from our Environmental Department. You can either speak directly to him after the meeting, or again, call or, or email, and we'll be happy to discuss. So with that, Supervisor?
Thank you very much, Ms. Murray. Thank you. Before we go to the public comment period, I also would like to offer my thanks to our department heads, our professional department heads, Department of Bar and Motorways, Planning Department. I also want to thank our Town Attorney's Office. We have two attorneys here tonight. And I want the public to know that I think, as you could see this evening, this was a massive undertaking and a massive amount of work went into this project. This was not something that was done quickly. All public comment from the public, the taxpayers who live in this town, were taken into consideration, and I think we've shown that. Certainly, we will have comments. I also want to take a moment to thank the Town Board, who was completely involved in this process from the day we started it right up to now, so I want to thank the board members for all the hard work that you've put into this also. This is something, I think- This is something, I think, as Allison reported, we have not had a updated master plan in over a half a century in Smithtown. So it certainly was an endeavor that really needs to be done, not just for this board, but for future town boards. It is a footprint. It is a living, breathing document. There isn't anything in stone that's in here, but it will be, it would be well-used by future town boards. And I want to thank Steve, I want to thank H2M for your professionalism and everything you've done to guide us through the process. So thank you very much. With that, we're going to open it up. Again, a reminder, there is no Q and A. The three-minute rule will be in effect when the alarm sounds. You know you have a minute to wrap it up. We would appreciate your cooperation. We'll call you up one at a time. All of your comments will be recorded, and then we will move to the end of the meeting. So Deputy Clerk?
First speaker is Joseph Ballhoffer.
Please state your name for the record and your address.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Joseph Ballhoffer. I'm an attorney and title insurance agent at 291 Lake Avenue of St. James. What's going on with this? I reside at 3 Fox Meadow Lane and Head of the Harbor, and I'm the Chairman of the Board of Zoning Appeals and Head of the Harbor. The most significant deficiency I see with this plan is inadequate attention to the Gyrodyne parcel. That development proposal is inconsistent with and contrary to the plan, yet the plan does not acknowledge or address those inconsistencies. There are several, as stated in my letter. I believe that at least is in part because the town has relied too much on representations made by Gyrodyne in its environmental impact statement and otherwise. Due to the time constraints, I can only address one, the most obvious, traffic. Gyrodyne's traffic study in its EIS is incorrect and severely understates the devastating and intolerable traffic impact the proposed development would have on the region. The town must conduct analysis of future cumulative traffic levels that would result from such a development that we now know are adjoining, that development and adjoining developed and to-be-developed parcels. Gyrodyne's opinion in the EIS, that traffic problems can be solved with the installation of traffic signals and turning lanes. However, I recently discovered the truth about what Gyrodyne's traffic expert testified to under oath in 2010 in the court of claims case. That expert testified that if the property is developed with light industrial buildings, traffic would increase by 3,206 percent. That's 32 times above 2,005 traffic levels. That expert also testified that if the property were developed as residential property, the traffic levels would increase by 338 percent, more than three times those traffic levels. The expert testimony is completely at odds with what Gyrodyne has represented to the town and to the public in its EIS and in other statements. Further, in that trial, Gyrodyne's appraisal and planning experts testified that, quote, "This property is not suitable for commercial development." They also said, quote, "Getting traffic on and off the property is a problem for that site." Gyrodyne itself made the case against its current proposal. It's inconceivable to me that the town can finalize a comprehensive master plan without a bona fide traffic study that takes into consideration the Gyrodyne parcel as well as the adjoining developed and to-be-developed parcels. Based upon Gyrodyne's own experts' opinions, the undeveloped parcel should be rezoned back to residential as it was before 1960. The plan should recommend that. In the meantime, while the plan is being completed, the town should enact a moratorium on approval of significant developed projects like this until adoption of the final plan. The draft plan also states that in Smithtown hamlets other than St. James, the average percentage of open space is 18 percent and states that in St. James is 1.6 percent. That is a glaring imbalance. The plan does not contain any proposal to rectify it, and it should. I'll wrap up. Thank you. This parcel presents an opportunity to fix that imbalance.
Mr. Ballhoffer, your time is up.
I got it. Thank you, sir. You know what? I think they want me to finish.
No, 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 because, no, we're not going to do that. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. It's two minutes.
That's unfortunate, because the public should know what's happening.
You're taking away from the speaker if you're going to make noise from your audience, okay? No, no. We don't do that. We don't see that. Sorry. You had, you made your comment, and you can, look, it's open, Mr. Ballhoffer. You can put the rest of your comments in writing to the Clerk. They'll be recognized. Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Ballhoffer, thank you.
Patricia Clark?
It's working. It's being recorded. Mr. Ballhoffer, you submitted it. We have it. We have this. We have it. 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 Thank you, sir.
Ma'am, we're just going to swap the microphone before you speak.
Good call.
Good evening, Supervisor Wareheim and members of the Town Board. My name is Patricia Clark. I live at 3 Mauchort in St. James, and I'm the President of Celebrate St. James, Past, Present, and Future, an organization dedicated to driving economic growth in St. James through its history and the cultural arts. Our efforts these past few years have been dedicated to this mission, and we are so grateful for the town's support and vision in all our endeavors. For this reason, we are strongly in support of this town's master plan for the future of St. James. The Lake Avenue corridor is perfectly positioned to become a revitalized, mixed-use, walkable town. We have a wonderful older population, and we want them to stay. Now it's time to attract a younger population as well, to ensure the future success of the town, and this master plan clearly lays out a path to do so while ensuring that our tax base remains strong. Many of St. James' strengths are recognized in the plan, and we have already begun to implement them, creating the historic St. James Cultural Arts District on Lake Avenue, the installation of dry sewer lines in anticipation of sewer access, which is desperately needed. And progress is visible with newly paved roads, sidewalks, lampposts, and signage to enhance the unique character of our town, as well as a future Celebrate Park on town land. H2M has listened to the residents. The vision is clear, and if we all work together, we, as a community, can make it happen. Credit goes to Supervisor Wareheim and his administration for his prudent and forward-thinking goals. Thank you for listening to the residents and for amending the draft plan accordingly based on public input. There's an awful lot of bad information out there. I'm assuming it's just the polarized world we live in, where Facebook gossip turns into news and facts. Very scary thought. When you actually read through the plan, it's not, clearly not, a love letter to development. In fact, the plan actually preserves that which St. James wishes to preserve and builds on our park systems and protects the Nissokog Headwaters River and surrounding wildlife. I realize there will always be opposition to anything the government wants to do, but this is truly a people's plan, well-done, and a long time coming. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Larry Flynn?
The name is Flynn, 8 Main Street, Kings Park. Central Business has been working in Kings Park for 70 years. To need to change it to something else at this point in life, I think it's a mistake. The Pulaski Road, Indian Head Road, East Main Street, Western Main Street is full of entrepreneurs. These are people that have lived here, and they have invested in these buildings, and they fixed it up. In the last 12 months, we had three substantial fix-ups, the Sprout, the one on Pulaski Road, the old Lautzen Hotel, and the Brooklyn Hotel. These are all done because of Central Business. Keep it Central Business. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Flynn.
Kathleen Diana?
My name is Kathleen Diana. I am a longtime resident. I reside at 5 Robin Hill Lane in St. James. I've also been a member of the Head of the Harbor Zone of Boarding Appeals for nearly 20 years, so anything to do with zoning and land use is near and dear to my heart. So with that, I'd like to thank the town of Smithtown for reviewing and responding to many of the comments in regard to the draft comprehensive plan, but I have additional input on issues that have not yet been addressed. The introduction of the draft plan states that it is needed, among other things, to preserve, protect, and enhance the historic scenic, cultural, and architectural character of Smithtown. The stated goals of the plan are especially important to residents since oversized commercial and mixed-use developments will overwhelm areas of the town and alter the character of their communities forever. Based on this, my recommendations are, one, include the villages in the planning process. The Mayor of Head of the Harbor and members of the Board of Trustees provided input at the January 28th meeting on many issues, and their comments have not yet been acknowledged or addressed. Number two, acknowledge major project proposals currently pending before the town that are inconsistent with and conflict with the plan, including the Gyrodyne mega-development plan. The Gyrodyne development is completely inconsistent with the plan and conflicts with its overarching goals and objectives. Number three, protect against approval of inappropriate development while the plan is being completed by implementing a moratorium on approval of significant development projects until the plan is finalized and adopted. This is a proper and legally defensible exercise of the town's authority to regulate land use under New York State town law. The problem with the Gyrodyne site has always been the zoning. The plan should recommend rezoning of the Gyrodyne site back to residential as it was prior to 1960 to ensure that future development of the site is consistent with the plan. As recently uncovered, even Gyrodyne's own experts testified in 2010, due to the surrounding roads and the location of the property, the proper zoning for the site is residential use. Number five, add an in-depth analysis and recommendations for the segment of State Route 25A from Edgewood Avenue to the Brookhaven Town Line to the plan. Due to the unique character of this visually and culturally significant area, as well as the potential impact on traffic, an updated traffic study is warranted. Number six, the plan fails to acknowledge that there is significant opposition to the Gyrodyne mega-development proposal by hundreds of residents, numerous elected officials, and the village of Head of the Harbor. For all of these reasons, the draft comprehensive plan should be modified.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Gordon Van Vecten?
My name is Gordon Van Vecten. I live at 7 Brackenwood Path in the village of Head of the Harbor. Yesterday, August 2nd, Mayor Delgard sent a letter. I forgot to say, I'm a member of the Board of Trustees in the village of Head of the Harbor. Yesterday, August 2nd, Mayor Delgard sent a letter to Supervisor Wareheim and the Town Council members addressing some of the deep concerns our board members and many of our residents have regarding the proposed Gyrodyne development. The mayor's letter may be viewed on the Head of the Harbor website. The 75-acre Gyrodyne property is surrounded by a few working farms, residential housing, and historic buildings. The Gyrodyne development is completely inconsistent with numerous recommendations contained in the draft plan. The draft plan calls for concentrating denser commercial, residential, and mixed-use developments in downtown areas and away from heavily-traveled corridors. That is anything but what is being proposed by this project. On page 71, the draft plan recommends the town should support higher-density and traditional mixed-use development near transit stations or preserving community character. The Gyrodyne proposal is clearly in conflict with this recommendation. The traffic. If the development is allowed to proceed, the traffic on Route 25A will surely increase substantially, as Mr. Ballhoffer pointed out a little while ago. With this increase, motorists will undoubtedly seek ways around the traffic, particularly during rush hour periods. The only alternative routes will be through the winding, narrow roads of Head of the Harbor. The result of this will not only add danger to motorists, but to pedestrians as well. There are frequently groups of Avalon visitors walking along Harbor Road and Shep Jones Lane. This increased traffic will surely create a dangerous scenario, particularly at the speed that many people drive today. We note that the guiding principles of the draft plan encourage preserving the beauty of our natural environment. An open-space park would be a welcome and wonderful use for the last remaining open space in the town of Smithtown. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sally Lynch?
Hello, I'm Dr. Sally Lynch. I reside at 140 Harbor Road, and I just want to reiterate all the work that has been done on this comprehensive plan and thank the board for years and years of hard work. And I hope in my heart that you will truly evaluate the impact. Certain proposed megadevelopments could affect our community and affect our history, our culture, and change the landscape forever. So as one citizen in a large township, in a town that aches for open space, I hope that this committee will truly give a careful and comprehensive view to any impactful development, particularly in the northeast corridor. Thank you.
Keith MacIntone? Fort Solanga Association? I'm sorry.
My name is Keith McCartney. I'm president of the Fort Solanga Association. I live at 273 Bread &amp; Cheese Hollow Road in Fort Solanga. I've been there since 1957. The plan to make upgrade from light duty to heavy industry on the Carlson property, for lack of better words, has been strongly opposed by residents of Fort Solanga dating all the way back, dating all the way back to when the organic waste facility was initially proposed in September of 2018. When you had the rollout of this new zoning plan, significant opposition was presented at both the Comac and Kings Park rollouts. Significant. I think the Kings Park meeting, you had the largest turnout of any of the towns. What is being proposed, even though it's not written in the plan officially, is the organic waste processing facility, which is owned, the property's owned by Toby Carlson. His reputation, I will leave to that. The questions we have on that are, number one, the environment. That property sits on top of Long Island's only source of drinking water. The air pollution that would be brought on by such a facility, we're already bombarded by other businesses in that area between Covanta and other processing facilities that are operating illegally, but the town is letting them do their business anyway. There is a proposed rail spur going to this property, which has already been applied for. By allowing this rail spur to be installed, number one would be the hours of operation, being that they can only operate after Long Island Railroad finishes their operations about the day. It would be overnight. Okay? So you'd have noise pollution for the local residents of that area. So you'd have noise pollution for the local residents of that area, and you'd have noxious odors presented from these diesel engines having to run, especially in the wintertime, in order to maintain their status. The town needs to enforce current zoning, not upgrade the zoning to fit the need. And what will happen down the road—if this is allowed to happen—what will the town do in a year, two years, five years about the rest of the zoning that they originally planned to make heavy-duty? All right? Heavy industry?
Your time is up. Thank you very much.
Harold Moskowitz?
I'm here to talk about the proposed organic waste facility. Please state your name and address. Harold Moskowitz, 26 Glenview Avenue, Fort Solanga. The proposed organic waste facility sounds good on paper. However, there are many potential questions and results. We picture coffee grounds and apple cores, branches and leaves, but it can also involve human waste, sludge, and livestock manure, dead carcasses, or medical waste. Organic waste may contain antibiotics, chemicals, pathogens, radioactive or carcinogenic material, or even heavy metals like mercury, lead, and arsenic. At some point, might there be mandates from government on Long Island businesses to store and pay for removal of their weekly accumulation of organic material to the new facility? Note I said "Long Island businesses," not "local businesses." Such a facility would remain viable only if increasing amounts of material were received. Might Smithtown become the regional hub for organic recycling for all of the island, including Kings County and Queens County? That becomes more feasible if the special Long Island Railroad train spur is built. If the facility's capacity is large enough, what guarantee is in place to prevent recycling materials gaus from bringing in additional material from southern Connecticut with a Bridgeport-to-Porch Jefferson run? This facility would sit upon the main source of Long Island drinking water. In case of ongoing leakage, will expensive remediation by SCWA be paid for by ratepayers? Yes, there will be safety regulations. However, these can be ignored, and court proceedings can drag on for years. There will be inspectors, but given enough motivation, future inspectors can potentially be compromised to ignore reality. Should the future of our air and water quality depend on the ethical values of facility owners and inspectors? Will Smithtown and its brush-and-leaf collections require—will Smithtown end its brush-and-leaf collections? Will this require homeowners to pay for a new fee for pickups by private cotters? Will a proposed facility be a bioproducer, biogas producer? Can storage of such fuel cause explosions and deadly fires? The bottom line is that New York City, Long Island, town governments, carting firms, and the MTA, LIRR, all potentially benefit. Everyone except business owners who could have new requirements with expenses, and Long Island homeowners who would have to deal with the noise, truck traffic, exhaust fumes, odors, risk of water contamination, plus significant erosion of property value. I wish you would consider what this proposed organic facility could mean for the people who live in that end of Smithtown and for the people of the island because of the water quality that could be compromised. Thank you. Please state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Daniel Carpen. I'm a registered professional engineer in New York State. I reside at 3 Harbor Hill Drive, Huntington, New York. My comments are as follows. If you're going to allow a rail spur from the Long Island Railroad to the Compost Site, the MTA becomes an involved agency, and is not at the present time so into secret, you can't build the rail spur. End of story. Second of all, the school on New York Avenue should be—if the school district decides to sell it—should be acquired by the town and turned into a town hall. The principal's office will become the supervisor's office.
I'd like that.
Well, I think you ought to seriously consider talking to the school district about selling the school for $1 to the town and developing it into a town hall, because the present town hall is terribly antiquated, a century-old, and doesn't function very well, really. You really need to build a modern town hall like the Town of Hynken did 45 years ago, and they took an old school on Main Street, bought it from the school district for a dollar, redid it into a town hall. You also would take the auditorium in the school building and turn it into the meeting room for the town board, something that you very badly need in this town. So I suggest very strongly that you consider buying the—send the school district school, and the playing fields will remain in use for use by the residents, be a town park. So it'd benefit everybody. As far as the Gyrodine property—I know everyone's been talking about it—it should be turned into a public park. Nobody should be allowed to build there at all. And what we need is a total construction moratorium in the Town of Smithtown. No more new buildings, no more traffic jams. Supervisor, do you enjoy getting stuck in traffic jams? You get the idea? At one time, when I was a child, young child, I guess 10, 15, 20 years old, something like that, I actually had stock in the Gyrodine Company, but I sold it many decades ago. So, there's no conflict of interest there. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Members of the town board, town supervisor, thank you very much for allowing me to speak this evening. My name is Anthony Tansey. I reside at 16 Brand Street, Kings Park, New York. I am the president of the Kings Park Chamber of Commerce currently. I am the past president and vice president of the Smithtown Historical Society, currently sit on the Board of Zoning Appeals for the Town of Smithtown. So I've had a lot of titles in my time. My single most important title, though, is Dad. And I just want to say, on behalf of my family, the families of all the people that are sitting here this evening, that it's nice to have a town board that's actually listening to what the community says. I've been involved in a town for many, many years, and one of my biggest concerns—I was very vocal about long ago, when we had different heads of departments—was that this comprehensive plan had been talked about for years and years, and administration after administration. There was a time when I was taking a course for the Town of Smithtown for the position I hold on a zoning board, and it was a class where every town was represented, and the person who was instructing the class said, "Okay, what townships have their comprehensive plan updated five years ago?" And, you know, 20 hands went up. And then, "How many towns had their comprehensive plan updated 10 years ago?" And say, five hands went up. When they said over 20 years, there was only one hand that went up, and it was the director at the time of the Town of Smithtown. And my concern at the time had been, because of the strong-willed people and the department head positions, that the comprehensive plan would be something that would be created in the conference room of the departments, that there would be no input, it would be out of a textbook, it would be what they felt the Town of Smithtown should be. And I was so impressed at the way the Town of Smithtown had conducted these hamlet outreach plans over the last two years, that you went out to every hamlet, that you took all the input, and it became part of the plan. And as early as—as late as yesterday, hearing things that the community is saying and making changes to the plan—so this thing is actually from the people, for the people. And I just want to say, on behalf of my children, who I hope want to stay here because of what you're doing, I want to say thank you.
Thank you.
Patty Stoddard?
My name is Patty Stoddard. I am a vice president of the civic group We Are Smithtown, and my address is 400 Gibbs Pond Road, Nascot. When I heard that Smithtown was going to finally create a master plan, I was thrilled. I had been calling for a master plan for years, and finally, it was going to happen. And three years ago, the process started out on the right foot. Hundreds of residents showed up from each hamlet and gave their input to planners who were taking a lot of notes. There was a survey that many residents participated in. But after that strong start, the process just went off the rails and was taken over by developers. The plan is basically nothing more than a blueprint for how to build tall buildings everywhere throughout the communities. And it is a love letter to apartments that will transform Smithtown into the sixth borough of New York City. There are some good things about the plan, like the open space fund and expanding sidewalks. The problem is, the good stuff in the plan costs millions of dollars, and the bad things are free. It won't cost a dime to let developers build thousands and thousands of units of apartments in Smithtown, which is exactly what is underway and is what this plan calls for. The plan says that it only anticipates an increase of about 1% of the Smithtown population. As a former math teacher, I can tell you the numbers just don't add up. 1% of our current population is less than 1,200 people. Well, there are plans for $1,000—$1,000 apartments at the Hop Dog Industrial Park. This alone accounts for more than a 1% increase. The facts are simple. The town plans to add several thousand apartments in Smithtown, which will bring several thousand new residents, except these residents won't be putting down roots in the community the way homeowners do, because renters don't build equity in their homes. They will be paying exorbitant rents of $3,000, $4,000 per month, more than homeowners pay for mortgages, while the landlords get tens of millions of dollars in tax breaks. That means we, the existing residents, will have to foot the bill for more road maintenance, fire safety, and police. Our school taxes will only go up as we have to deal with the influx of new children to educate. We have a chance to get Smithtown right, to celebrate what makes our town great and to make it better. I agree with the 77% of my neighbors who, according to the town survey, want to retain single-family residential character in Smithtown. I agree with everyone who wants less traffic, not more, who wants walkable communities, and who understands that Smithtown is already fully developed, more than 97% developed, according to the town's own documents as of 2015. It's time to listen to what the residents have to say and have a plan that reflects our needs. Let's get back to basics, and instead of building another Queens, let's build a better Smithtown. Thank you.
My name is Meg Shuckah. I am a long-term resident—long-term, longtime resident of St. James. I am here to speak on the open-space aspect of the draft plan, or rather, the minimal amount of open space that exists in the St. James hamlet. It is my understanding, according to the draft comprehensive plan, that St. James has the smallest percentage of open space at 1.63% compared to the entire Smithtown township at 18.31% townwide. One of the guiding principles of the draft plan is to value open space in parks as an integral part of the community fabric and take advantage of opportunities for its enhancement and expansion. In addition, one of the overall goals and objectives of the plan is to preserve, protect, and enhance the historic, scenic, cultural, architectural character of Smithtown, and enhance public access to natural and recreational resources. Furthermore, natural systems and scenic areas should be encouraged to be conserved. The 74.9-acre Gyrodine site provides for such opportunity for open space, and it is one of the last large tracts of land in the northeastern part of Smithtown. A minimal amount of attention was given to the site and the draft comprehensive plan regarding open space potential. The small amount of open space discussed on this site would not be adequate for the many needs of the community. St. James has very little trail options, as is stated in the plan. This site could potentially be an active recreational opportunity for the residents. The plan states that the town is lacking in bicycle facilities, walking facilities such as fitness trails, and ice skating and cross-country skiing areas. 89% of the town residents that responded to the survey indicated that environmental quality and environmental protection is very important—or important to them. And 69% of those surveyed indicated they would support the town acquiring open space. The areas of the draft plan that discuss open space warrants further discussion on the Gyrodine site. This is important because, as the plan indicates, quote, "It identifies strategies to address ongoing issues and opportunities resulting in making Smithtown a desirable place to live, work, and visit," unquote. Let's not lose this potential open space opportunity with one of the last remaining large sites in the northeastern part of Smithtown. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Mike Cooley?
My name is Mike Cooley, 14 Chivalry Lane, Nascot, New York. I'm also a vice president of We Are Smithtown Civic Group. Thanks to the town board and current administration for recognizing the need for an updated master plan to guide the town forward. Unfortunately, my accolades end there. For a town that is already, by a 2006 estimate, 97% developed, it's confusing and disappointing to see a plan that seems to lay out the red carpet for builders and developers alike. I expected the plan to put forth a strategy to protect and conserve the little open space we have left, more parks, open spaces, and conservation land. Instead, it outlines easing of restrictions to allow for apartments and other high-density housing. This is not a friendly solution to the existing tax-paying residents that have made their homes here, especially when developers are receiving taxpayer-funded tax breaks to add density to our community. This will lead to bigger class sizes in schools, more traffic on the roads, and a need for more police, fire, and other services, therefore offsetting any potential tax gain, which sure seems a long way off when we are starting millions of dollars in the hole. You took a survey, and you know what the residents want and don't want to see in town. Anyone who took the time to read the plan can see that the opinions and concerns of residents, including a clear vote against high-density housing, took a backseat to the agenda of the town. We live in a new world over this last year and a half. People aren't commuting like they were before. They're not moving to the suburbs to live in an apartment. People want outdoor space and open space. Any studies on housing that was used in the last two years to inform the plan really need to be looked at again. Another recent example that highlights this is a change to the town noise ordinance. The restrictions on construction have effectively been completely removed, but they still want to tell you and me when we can cut our lawns and remove our snow. The message has been received loud and clear. Smithtown is for sale. Every piece of vacant land is being developed or has a "for sale" sign out front. Large projects such as Gyrodine and the Smithtown Boulevard Apartments in Nascot continue to get considered and green-lighted in spite of not having a new master plan adopted. I've personally spent a lot of time giving input via public sessions, talking to and educating fellow community members about the plan, and reading the drafts of the plan because I was excited to have my voice heard. I sure hope it wasn't all for nothing. Thank you.
Phyllis Hart?
My name is Phyllis Hart. I live at 20 Pondarosa Lane in Nascot, and I am also a vice president of We Are Smithtown. This comprehensive plan shines a spotlight on the need for community involvement into major projects like this. The planners conducted a town-wide survey and collected input from hundreds and hundreds of residents who told them that we absolutely do not want density, tall buildings, or apartments. The survey showed that residents wanted more amenities, like a community center and walkable communities. This was a great first step, asking the residents what they wanted. The problem was, after the initial outreach, there was radio silence for three years, while the master plan was being drafted, until the plan was actually unveiled before Christmas. while the master plan was being drafted, until the plan was actually unveiled before Christmas in the middle of a pandemic. This plan focused primarily on apartment buildings, allowing for three-story buildings throughout the town. This isn't what we signed up for. The problem is, we're now discussing a plan that is completely out of sync with what the community wanted, because the community wasn't involved. The town needs to go back to the drawing board and this time, put the residents first. That means the creation of a residents advisory board, one for each hamlet comprised of residents and civic leaders, not developers. The resident advisory board should be permanent fixture of town government, where the community is consulted on new development and other issues on a regular basis. Community meetings should be held regularly to not only inform people of the important policies, but to listen to and hear and address the residents' concern. If the residents are against a plan, that plan should be, should not go forward, plain and simple. With this draft master plan, developers and their lobbyists were clearly catered to. But what about the rest of us, who want to, who will live with the consequences of the overdevelopment long after the construction cranes have left? We need to pause this process and go back to the drawing board. We deserve a master plan that's going to reduce the density and reduce the traffic. We should be focusing on affordable, single-family homes, not apartments, to preserve the suburban character of Smithtown. The time is now to create a resident advisory board in each community and bring the community to the table. Let's base this new plan on what we have to say and not what will line the developers' pockets.[711.75][711.75](APPLAUSE).
Good evening, and thank you supervisor and the town board. My name is Teri Alessi-Misselli. I'm president and CEO of the HIALI. We're one of the recognized voices for Long Island business and a powerful force, and we're a steward, as you know, for the Long Island Innovation Park at Hopgog, which is smack in the middle of the town of Smithtown. We reside at 225 Wireless Boulevard in Hopgog. And I have to tell you that we commend the town and the town board members for this comprehensive plan. We feel it is necessary, and we are in full support, because the town of Smithtown needs to remain one of the designated areas, the destinies really, to, for talent and workforce on Long Island. You know, when we read the plan, we saw several things, two things in particular, diversified housing and downtown revitalization, two key elements to young professionals. The Rouse Foundation very recently did a study that looked at 67% of young adults on Long Island between the ages of 18 and 34 are looking at leaving Long Island within the next five years. And also, by 2025, are probably about 75% of our workforce will need to be young professionals. So this mass exodus is a huge threat to Long Island and a threat to the town, and, you know, we know that. So when you look at diversified housing and downtown revitalization, it is absolutely critical. These millennials want a place to live, to work, to play. Our empty nesters want a place that they can stay in Smithtown and be able to downsize, and we feel that this comprehensive plan really helps that. I will also say thank you to the board, because you've been a valued partner on our sustainability study for the Long Island Innovation Park at Hopgog. It was truly a transparent process with stakeholders to really look at what that park can look like and the opportunity in that park, and we're very pleased to see that you endorse it in the plan. I will also tell you, lastly, I am a lifelong Smithtown resident, a very proud one, and my children go in the school district, and we're really excited about the opportunities for new dining and new opportunities in entertainment and things like that. I really hope, if they choose to, that they can really stay here, and I really appreciate your progressive approach. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, members of the board and supervisor Wareheim. This is the first time I've been in a crowd like this in probably a year and a half. I don't go in crowds because of the situation with this virus and stuff, but tonight, as I said, it's not a matter of, it's a matter of what I felt was more important.
Please state your name and address for the record, please.
I apologize. My name is Robert N. Conlin. I reside at 41 Pulaski Road in Kings Park, New York. I too am a lifelong resident of Kings Park, went to school at Kinney Bar during 12th grade, still live in Kings Park. And, you know, I hate to say, but, and I wasn't saying anything, but, in spite of all these modern techniques of trying to get this message out, the way I heard about this was somebody called me on the telephone. So, so much for modern techniques and showing things, and it's still one person talking to another, letting people know what's going on. As I said, I own two pieces of property on Pulaski Road in Kings Park, and I am opposed to the rezoning of the properties from central business to neighborhood business. I also have two notarized affidavits from property owners on the block, which I'd like to read if I could have the ability to read, if I could be able to.
Conlin, or you can turn them in to the clerk, and they will be part of the record, but it's up to you. Do you have one minute and 50, almost two minutes?
Dear sir, I am deeply opposed to changing the zoning code on Pulaski Road, East-Northport Road, to neighborhood business. I have lived, and this is by an 82-year-old lady. I have lived on Pulaski Road for many years and have raised my family here. My grandfather, John Higgins, had owned property on Pulaski Road since the turn of the 19th century. My father was born in 1902 as well, and has nine siblings. My extended family has owned property here since that time. I presently own two properties on Pulaski Road and feel changing the zoning would be a great full, my eyes aren't the best, imposition to me and my family. Sincerely, Francis Higgins, notarized and signed. The other ones, by a fellow that couldn't make it for medical reasons tonight. Dear board members, my name is Nicholas Uliano, property owner of 90 Pulaski Road. My apologies for not being able to attend in person. I recently went for a heart procedure. I want to state I am not in favor of zoning, the change of zone, and that's how the letter goes on. So if somebody would like to take these and submit to the record...
Turn them in to the town clerk, please.
Okay. Thank you.[1078.24][1078.24](APPLAUSE).
Rolling Hills Drive in Nascot?
All right, so go skip from...
Is that him?
I don't know.
Oh. Okay. Hal Tarry?
All right, so... Here he comes. Okay.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Hal Tarry, 20 Ivy Hill Drive in Smithtown. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm here as an advocate for making the roads safe for bicyclists, and not just people that are in clubs, but for anybody that wants to get on their bicycle and ride. Back in the June 2nd planning advisory report that you got, amendment number 18 recommended that the town work with the county and state and incorporate Suffolk County's bicycle plan into your plan. And I appreciate that, that'll be a help, but it is, in fact, still the county's plan, and their plan, if you look at it, in the first 10 years, there's very little that happens in the town of Smithtown, if you look at the map of what they're proposing. So, that in itself doesn't give us a heck of a lot. And the other thing is that most of their plan is focused on higher-trafficked roads. So, for somebody like myself that rides a lot, or for some of the club members, their plan will actually help. You know, if you live in, if you're a member of Huntington Bicycle Club and you want to go riding out to Rocky Point cutting through Smithtown, well, Suffolk County's plan will help. You'll get out there, you can look back by a southern route. But for the average person in Smithtown, and that's what I'm focused on, who wants to be able to go and ride over to the drugstore to pick up a prescription, or go pick up something at the supermarket, you need to focus on the local roads. And their plan is a good plan for the countywide, but it doesn't really help the town of Smithtown that much. So, I'm hoping that the town will actually, I had asked earlier, for the town to include a bike master plan in our comprehensive master plan. And it seems like that's not going to happen, but I think what could happen is, and it could even be separate from the comprehensive plan. Pass a complete streets resolution, three of our four neighboring towns have one already, and maybe that's why Suffolk County included more in their plan for the surrounding towns. Include changes to the town zoning and permitting regulations to support bicycling. That's something that really needs to be part of the comprehensive plan, because that's the focus of it, and you don't want to go back and change it later. Recruit residents from each area of the town to work on biking in their area. Other towns have done this. Form a bike committee, get one resident from each area to sit down and say, what can we... And start by identifying some improvements that can be done at low cost in each area. Seek funding for those improvements, and then we can go from there. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I will call Nicholas Barnoski the last time. Okay.
I'm the president of the civic group We Are Smithtown, and I live on 95 acre court in Smithtown. This comprehensive plan is nothing more than permission for developers to build tall and to build dense. The plan includes pictures of what Smithtown should be, pictures that are literally from Wyandanch and Patchogue. This is a plan for more gridlock, traffic, apartment buildings everywhere, mega developments like Jarrodine, and a population boom after 50 years of stability. This is the opposite of what residents said they wanted when planners conducted their surveys years ago. The residents said they were overwhelmingly against development and height, and yet here we are. The plan says that we don't have diversity of housing stock, and with the mantra of affordable housing, we are being told to accept three-story buildings on Lake Avenue, hundreds of housing units at New York Avenue, over 1,000 units in Hopgog, nearly 200 in Nascot, and thousands more throughout the town. Our population has remained stable at around 120,000, a little bit less, since 1970. We're talking about a population explosion that our roads, our schools, our police, and our fire services can't handle. That means higher taxes to meet these needs, and the residents will have to pay for the privilege literally. These projects have been receiving and will receive multimillion-dollar IDA tax breaks. Who is going to be left with the bill for all these extra services that these renters will be using? Us, the Smithtown taxpayer. Affordable housing is important, but developers are simply unable to build affordable apartments. They get millions in taxpayer handouts and deliver apartments that cost $2,500, $3,500, or $4,500 per month. That's not affordable. That's more than most residents' mortgage and taxes combined. What we do need is more affordable houses, like starter homes. New houses built today are expensive McMansions, out of reach for younger people. Instead of insanely priced apartments, we should focus on zoning and construction incentives for ranches less than 2,000 square feet on smaller plots of land. We should be working with Suffolk County to create tax incentives, not for developers of apartment buildings, but for first-time homebuyers so they can better afford to live in Smithtown in these starter homes. That is the solution to affordable housing, not turning Smithtown into Queens. The residents are not willing to give up the suburban character of our town. Adding mega developments and thousands of apartments throughout town is guaranteed to do just that. Please, we need to go back to the drawing board and start over. The residents deserve better. Thank you.[1518.21][1518.21](APPLAUSE).
Hi, Linda Henninger, 1 Meadowwood Lane, Fort Salonga, New York. I'm president of the Kings Park Civic Association. The Kings Park Civic Association would like to thank the residents who have come out to be part of this process and the town for its transparent and responsive efforts undertaken so far during this master plan process. We firmly anticipate this will continue. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. I'd like to applaud the town for putting together the master plan, and specifically Peter and Allison for their comments and their effort. Specifically addressing the rezoning and downzoning of Pulaski Road and Kings Park. I've tried to read portions of the comprehensive plan, and unfortunately, I don't see in it where it really addresses neighborhood business. Allison said there was a setback, it was removed, and it's only 10 feet now as opposed to the 50. But the rest of it is not in the plan, so I don't know for sure what the side yard requirements would be. I'd like to state that Pulaski Road has been in central business for over 50 years, I guess, and probably 50% of the people have purchased it there with the idea that it was central business and it had the potential for investment at some point. Changing it to a neighborhood business zone without noting the requirements, because it's not in the document that I've been reading, kind of creates a question. When you reduce the side yards from 10 feet to 3 feet, you really do significantly limit what the people can do. Now, those lots are all 50, 50 by 100, 50 by 150. Those lots won't meet the minimum requirement for your neighborhood business as outlined with the planning department. So I'd like to get more information, and I'd like to see possibly the homeowners and residents that are on Pulaski Road be sent some information, and maybe even have a meeting with them. There's probably 35 homes and businesses there, and I'd like to get a better understanding of why it is necessary to downzone parcels that have been that way for the last 50 years. But like I said, I appreciate the effort that's been put forth, and I'd like to continue this dialogue, if possible. Thank you.
Thank you.[1737.03][1737.03](APPLAUSE).
My address is 30 Honeysuckle Court in Melville. So I'd like to speak in support of the comprehensive draft plan and revitalization of Smithtown. I'm a professional who lives and works on Long Island, and I'm seeking to grow here. So I grew up nearby, in the town of Huntington, but my mom grew up in Smithtown, so I've spent a decent amount of time at my grandparents' house on 50 Acre Road South. As a potential homebuyer, I think about the areas that my peers and I choose to spend time in, areas like Huntington... areas like Huntington, Patchogue, Riverhead. Areas that are characterized by their energy, their vitality. I think the decision for Smithtown to not adapt is risky. Individuals like myself are seeking vibrant communities to grow in, a community like the one that's presented in the vision that is the comprehensive plan. In regard to the concern that Smithtown will become another Queens, so to speak, I think it's worth noting that, to my understanding, the densities of Smithtown are not changed, but rather concentrated. If Smithtown isn't moving ahead, it's falling behind. I encourage the adoption of a new plan for Smithtown to be on par with the future of Long Island that those of my generation are seeking. Thanks.
Frank Scagluso?
Good evening. I'm Frank Scagluso, speaking on behalf of the Niskent Chamber of Commerce. I just have a few comments about the process and the plan itself. I want to express our appreciation for the town's approach in soliciting public input from all the different communities with respect to the overall master plan. It's a great example of community-based planning. Overall, the master plan has amended zoning to better reflect the present real-world uses. The old plan, of course, is over 50 years old, and this will better suit the current conditions in our town. The open space fund is especially advantageous as it ensures the remaining 8% of Smithtown, which has not yet been developed, to remain preserved. It'll attract builders to focus on redeveloping blighted sites and will keep them cognizant of the community's interest in protecting untouched lands. Additionally, it will pave the way to building our park systems and protect the environment without the taxpayers' expense. The facade recommendations that was touched upon by the master plan, as it appears, the town is looking into ways of incentivizing businesses to improve storefronts in the downtown areas. This is an excellent way to give the downtowns a facelift as we wait for the construction of sewers and the implementation of a sewer system. The recommendations for each of the downtown and surrounding commercial areas have been very carefully calibrated. It's a unique approach to the community's character. St. James, Lake Avenue area is a quaint, walkable downtown, while North Country Road highlights restaurants, retail, and office space. Thank you for keeping the building heights at the levels that they are at. For downtown Smithtown, that focus is on transit-oriented development along Main Street and links the transit users and pedestrians to the train stations and downtowns. This will help support and promote economic and pedestrian activity, which was desperately needed in that area. As far as attracting new businesses, including corporate headquarters, statistics show that businesses are attracted to vibrant downtowns for reasons associated with talent attraction. Businesses will locate in the downtown areas to compete more effectively for young, skilled professionals that are looking for more walkable amenity-rich locations in which to work and possibly live, such as has been accomplished in downtown Patchogue. In other words, young professionals are seeking a live work-play environment. Creating this in our downtowns ensures that our commercial tax base will remain strong over the next half-century. As far as protecting residential neighborhoods, there is no land use changes proposed for existing single-family home neighborhoods. One of the many preservation-oriented goals of the plan specifically states that demolitions and new construction should be monitored to ensure single-family residential neighborhood community character so that it's not altered and that neighborhoods must not be destabilized by lack of compatible scale. As far as brain drain is concerned, Smithtown's aging population...
Scagluso, time's up, so just...
Thank you. Part of my casual appearance, I just came from the concert down at the gazebo.
I hope it was successful.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, the last speaker card we have is for Colette Porcello. Colette?
Okay.
Take your time.
Hello, and thank you for letting me speak. My name is Colette Porcello, and I live on High Hutches Court in Head of the Harbor. I appreciate everybody that has spoken tonight, and I appreciate the board for being here. I do feel that the town needs to enact a moratorium on large development, on large development projects until the comprehensive plan is finalized. It's normal in a comprehensive plan to include changes and zoning to accommodate overdevelopment. Gyrodine was originally zoned residential and should be returned back to residential because the hamlet of St. James cannot handle the traffic too caused by commercial development. My husband and I moved to this area 25 years ago, and that was partially the reason. We had a beautiful piece of property, and we love the area. And now I can't even get out of my street without nearly being hit by a car. My daughters came home from college, they graduated, they're twins. And we had a celebratory bike ride, which we often do. We couldn't cross 25A. There was a scuffle with some other cars and traffic, bikers and trucks that I'm sure are overweight. And the capacity on 25A is outrageous, and we couldn't get across. There's no sidewalks. That's something we acknowledged when we moved into this community 25 years ago. And it was always a very trepidatious situation trying to get across 25A so I could get into Head of the Harbor. My court is Head of the Harbor. I am south of 25A, by B and B Nursery. So this Gyrodine development will really affect us tremendously. Aside from that, as it did with this situation, and I went flying off the curb and had a broken leg and another broken foot. The historic corridor should be studied. A plan should be put in place and preserve the few remaining tracks of open land in our area. If you listen to the community concerns and your own polling, you will see the hamlet of St. James is in desperate need of parkland. And I am not a president, I am not a vice president, I'm not on the board of a civic association, but I am a mother. I am a special ed teacher 25 years in this district. And this is something that our community cannot handle. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, on behalf of the board, I'd like to thank you for your comments this evening and for your cooperation. I think it was very productive tonight, all these comments will be put in the record. Remember, the hearing will be adjourned tonight and will be open until August 9th. Close of business for any additional comments. Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, I had called Town Hall, and I was told that I didn't need to register? Can I speak for three minutes?
Did you sign a speaker sheet?
No.
Okay. Then state your name and address for the record and go right ahead.
Great, thank you. My name is James Scully. I reside at 8 Woodlot Road in Head of the Harbor. Born and raised in St. James, resident of Head of the Harbor, and member of the Head of the Harbor Planning Board. Supervisor Wareheim and the town board should be commended absolutely for having the courage to begin the process of developing the new comprehensive plan. Balancing the interests of individual property owners and also the greater interest of residents of the town is not an easy process, and it obviously requires very difficult decisions. While the draft comprehensive plan is a good starting point for discussion, it can be and should be strengthened based on input from landowners, village governments, and residents. So including the villages in the planning process, under the general land use plan recommendations, the plan states that the town should work with local partners such as neighboring municipalities to participate in intermunicipal planning in the existing development plan. However, the plan states that the three incorporated villages in the town control land use within their own boundaries and are therefore not discussed in this report. So these two statements, I believe, contradict each other. As indicated by Mayor Dahlgaard's extensive comment letter in the scoping process for the EIS, village governments, particularly those with shared borders along heavily-traveled corridors, have a significant stake in the comprehensive plan and should be included in the planning process. I believe Mayor Dahlgaard's letter looks to me like it was ignored, which is upsetting to me. Members of our trustees of Head of the Harbor also provided input at a January Zoom meeting and urged the town to consider rezoning the Gyrodine site back to residential, which was discussed tonight, and to enact a moratorium on approvals of major subdivisions until the comp plan was finalized. I also believe that that was ignored. I am not so sure that it's an example of coordination and partnership, and I would ask that in further planning, planning be done in conjunction with villages such as Head of the Harbor. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. All right, ladies and gentlemen, before we adjourn the hearing and then close the meeting, we heard your comments. I think our planning director, Mr. Hauntz, has some clarification on a few matters. So I'll let him speak to that matter so you can hear him at this time.
Yeah, I've been writing all night, and there are many, many comments, so nobody knows where to begin. But also, nobody said this was going to be easy. If it was easy, we'd probably be doing this every five to 10 years. That's part of the reason we've probably gone almost 60 years in this town with an update of the master plan because it was easier to just hear different zone change applications and have applicants come in. We're trying to prepare a plan that we believe would be a balance between preservation and development. Everybody here, we're residents also. The town board is a resident, I'm a resident of Niskent, David. So we care deeply about this community as well. One of the things, they're not in any particular order, is one of the things, we're committed to the vitality of the downtowns. The supervisor and the town board have made it clear that the downtowns are the lifeblood of the town. We're committed to trying to bring sewers to Kings Park. We're working every week, we're having meetings with the county, trying to work out sewers for Smithtown. Hopgog Industrial Park with expansion, they're the economic engine in this town. Without the Hopgog Industrial Park, there wouldn't be a lot of employers in our town. Also, everybody, when we had the charrettes, as you want to call them, or the workshops, everybody said, "We want our downtowns to be cool, like Huntington and Patchogue and Northport." And that's what we've been trying to do with the concepts. When you talk about the heights, we're only recommending heights be increased in the downtown cores that are adjacent to railroad stations. So transit-oriented development would be basically in proximity to where the town hall is. As far as apartments in the industrial park, that came up, and people were saying we're proposing nearly 1,000 apartments. There was an amendment that would possibly allow for 13 sites to consider mixed use. Only one application came in, and that's been withdrawn. That has officially been withdrawn, that was called 49 Wireless. And as of now, there is nothing pending in the Hopgog Industrial Park. As far as the OWPF, or Organic Waste Processing Facilities, there was an amendment being considered. That has been decided even in the last week, that that's suspended. We're not pursuing anything right now. We're not looking to permit an organic waste processing facility in the old Northport Road area. As far as the CB, NB zoning, NB, I think there's a little confusion because we've had these zoning categories for so long. Everybody knows what CB is, which is your central business, which is typically your downtowns, and your NBs are your neighborhood businesses that were more typical of Smithtown Boulevard. Well, what we're proposing is that CB goes away entirely. What we're doing is, it's not a one-size-fits-all. Kings Park is very different than Smithtown, and Smithtown's very different in character than St. James. We don't like that one-size-fits-all that may be allowing a three-story building on Main Street in Smithtown. It's not appropriate for necessarily Lake Avenue, St. James, where the lots are smaller, the character's a little more historic. So what's happening is we're crafting individual zoning for the downtowns. Kings Park, for example, will have a set of four different zoning categories for the downtown alone. And what NB really is, it's the old CB. So if you look at what CB is now, there will be parts of it that would remain, but it would come across as NB. So when we talk about Pulaski Road, essentially, you're maintaining your CB zoning. It's just going to be called NB because we don't want it to be confused with downtown Kings Park zoning, or Kings Park Core zoning, or St. James Lake Avenue zoning. So I really think that if you look at them side by side and you see NB on Pulaski, or NB on 25A in St. James, and you compare it to what the existing CB is, you'll see that they're really the same thing. It's just we're renaming it to avoid confusion. Gyrodine, that's like poking a hornet's nest, but, you know, it did come up. It's a pending subdivision application. You will have a chance to speak about it. It's a matter that's, it's an application that's pending before the planning board. There's no hearing proposed. At this time, the uses are conceptual. When they submitted that subdivision application nearly three, four years ago, they were proposing just a mere subdivision of the property under existing zoning. And one of the uses was a hotel to complement the catering facility there and also serve the Stony Brook University to the east. One of them was an assisted living facility, and the other one was, lot was proposed to be an office building. There are no specific plans for those uses. They were, I guess, just considered conceptual at that time because there was a lot of demand for those uses. We've kind of been advised that they have no contracts right now with any developer for any of those specific uses. And yes, as you many have said, COVID has changed. Last year, there was not a lot of demand for a catering facility or hotels. But what this has meant to do is establish a threshold for the environmental impact study. And if adopted, I'm not saying it's going to be, but if adopted by the planning board, it would set the maximum threshold. You may find that the uses are changed to something else, and they're far less intense. Yeah, like I said, I was talking about the subdivision, not the comp plan. The comp plan is trying to talk more specific to preserving the character along 25A and trying to maintain open space as much as possible. One of the things we do, especially with the planning board, and I saw several planning board members here in the audience, is we try to cluster. I know it doesn't make sense to some people, but you might have a 10 acres of land, and it might be zoned one-acre zoning. Rather than have 10 one-acre lots, what we normally try to do is have 10 half-acre lots, and then that way you're able to preserve five acres. This has been very common and very successful in a lot of our subdivisions around town. And a lot of the open space that we do have is a result... and a lot of the open space that we do have is a result of the cluster zoning that we have. So I would anticipate that some of those elements will be implemented in a Gyrodine application if we get to that point. Right now, it's still in a review. We're going through the process. The process is working. Nothing's been approved, nothing's been denied. We're just going through the review process, and that's where we're at with that, and that's a matter for our planning board. The only other thing I say is if you have questions, please email the planning department, Allison, myself, David, even the town attorney's office, Jen and Matt. We try to assist anybody with any questions that they might have and try to get back to you as soon as possible. And you know, if you send an email, you can write longer than you might be able to submit in a three-minute timeframe, so we encourage you to do that. And I just thank everybody for their comments and their help for the last three years. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hans. So again, the town board and our professionals will be here for a while this evening. If you have specific questions that you want to come up and ask us to clarify, any concerns you have, let us know. With that, I will move to adjourn this public hearing until close of business August 9th, and the hearing will be closed again on August 10th.
Second. Supervisor Wareheim?
Yes.
Councilman McCarthy?
Yes.
Councilwoman Noick?
Yes.
Councilwoman Inzarella?
Yes.
Councilman Lowman?
Yes.
I will move to close the meeting this evening.
Second. Supervisor Wareheim?
Yes.
Councilman McCarthy?
Yes.
Councilwoman Noick?
Yes.
Councilwoman Inzarella?
Yes.
Councilman Lowman?
Yes.